And this evening, we even have where the, something where the projector's working. Oh.
Some gremlin could have gotten in there.
Early on, it was working.
So again, I'm Bill Spade, representing the.
Uh, is there remote? Is this a continued public hearing?
Continued public hearing, yeah.
You don't need to open with a word of prayer?
Did we open our meeting in general?
Yes.
Okay, great.
So I have some images that I'd like to show you quickly, things that I was hoping to show you the last time. I think we didn't get, get to see any of that, just to show you what we had at that point. Can do that quickly, and then also maybe slightly get into the tree, issues of the tree permit and existing trees versus trees we're removing, can show you that, so I'll try to go over that. I know there's probably a way to advance the pictures with the remote, but. Yes?
Ah, there you go.
But you want to change the picture?
If you go up to view and click on full screen, you'll get rid of all the periphery stuff. See down below, Control L?
Control L?
And then use the little arrows to scroll.
On here.
Or on the keyboard.
On the keyboard.
whichever works easier for you. Just want to do some target practice.
Good.
Thank you.
Works beautifully.
We have, probably the latest issue was going through existing trees, trees to be removed, trees to be retained, and relative to our full landscaping plan, if I might borrow the green light, you may know that.
No, no, you're, you're.
In this area along abutting 115 Bedford Road, there were four, are four existing trees, and we had intended to try to retain those existing trees, and as it turned out, two of them were, well, all, all four of them are in various stages of not great shape, two particularly not good shape that have to come down, and two that we're going to, or one that we're going to retain and try to help it maintain its health, and that's the one with the circle there. We came up with an alternate planting plan to help, you know, re-vegetate that area with, you know, trees that are appropriate, trying to retain this concept of a buffer, a residential, you know, sort of residentially scaled buffer. So we've gone through that with Steve Coleman, I think he's done a, I know he's done a letter, and the resolution reflects the specific things we talked about, and so I think we're, we're all on the same page in terms of the trees, but just so you know, we're keeping that tree. There are two trees in the back here that we're retaining, and a tree over here. The ones with the big circles are the ones, they're existing trees that we're retaining, and then a couple more along here. All other, these were right along the property line. There are several others that are more inboard from the property line in this zone that have to come down due to the excavation, but we feel like we can retain these trees as they're, they're at least 10 feet away from the construction. So there was a final item in terms of the DBH of replacement trees. Gone through that calculation, our original plan showed us four inches, four and a, I think it was four inches short on DBH for replacement. We've since modified the plan to reflect Steve's comments. I have that modified plan here, we can submit that.
Larger linden tree.
Larger linden trees, right. So, so we're, we're all on the same page with that regard. Unless you have any other questions regarding trees, maybe just a couple other images to show you, and then.
I had a quick question about the, I think it's the southeast corner, but over where the refuse is.
Here, yeah.
Yeah, what are we doing there in terms of making sure that we're insulating the area for sound and sight? I, I think you have some trees there, but maybe you can tell us a bit more about it. And also, you know, eventually, we're going to have someone to the south, probably developing property.
Correct.
Right, and so what are we doing there in terms of, you know, making sure that that's somewhat isolated by sound and sight?
Okay, well, we have the retaining wall 10, essentially 10 feet in from the property line that's surrounding on, on that line. The 10-foot buffer, which will remain at grade, is, becomes heavily vegetated as we're showing. The dumpster is surrounded by the, you know, required six-foot high, I think it's six-foot high fencing to enclose it. The trees that are, the landscaping that are proposed are starting out at 10 to 12 feet in height, the, the, which would bring it already to the top of the dumpster fence height, and then of course, growing from there. Beyond our property, particularly all through this zone, is about a 30-foot-deep area of mature trees. And then beyond that, particularly for this property behind here, there are existing evergreen trees and other kinds of significant vegetation, so in that direction to the residential lots and on, I think it's well screened, well protected. The property next door here, it's, there are, I think hardly any trees, pretty vacant lot at the rear there. So, you know, I think we're, we're almost doing the best we can in terms of vegetating that 10-foot buffer there.
And I think another change that we have here, and I think is one of our recommendations in working with Steve, is the, those parking spots that are land-banked, basically are going to be lawn, and I guess Steve has given you some protocol for developing the soils.
Correct.
18 inches deep, et cetera. So for the benefit of the public who might be interested in this, we've done that now in terms of adding that additional green space.
Right.
For these land-banked.
So it creates effectively about a 20-foot-wide.
Right.
Buffer on our lot from the edge of the paving to the property line, you know.
I had a couple of questions also.
Sure.
First of all, I very much like the use of the dogwood right at the, at the roadway to sort of buffer and soften.
Yeah.
The, the line of screening that goes down the edge of the property line there. But, you know, I did note, and it does sound like those trees that are coming down over there are in very poor condition.
Yes.
So it's clear that they're coming down.
Right.
But they are deciduous trees, and they're being replaced with what will eventually be rather tall conifer trees or evergreens, the columnar junipers. So I just wanted to know if the property owner at 115 Bedford has had a chance to look at the plan and what the reaction is.
Yeah, we had that conversation. His preference was that we retain the 15 to 20-foot height limit for those evergreens along the property line. So I believe that's what we're showing in terms of maximum height of the evergreens there.
Are you going to trim those? Because there's a bunch of varieties of those.
Okay. Yes, so if we haven't shown the correct version, I thought Steve looked at that, and we certainly will make sure we do, but I, yeah, I agree, I know, there are different species, and so beyond my knowledge, I just knew that we were able to plant trees that stayed at a maximum of 20 feet in height. That neighbor stated their preference for that height limit, so that they retained the, even did the diagram for the winter sun exposure for, for those newly planted trees, so, yeah.
I'm sure Steve has looked at this, but you know, when I see the word Norway maple, I think invasive species. So is a columnar Norway maple a different manner of tree altogether that is not invasive?
Correct.
Thank you. I would not have known that answer, so.
I do know that because we talked about it.
Okay.
A follow-up. At one time, we were talking about planting on that neighbor's property. Is that off the table now?
Off the table, yes.
Okay, just want to confirm.
Yeah, I think that we've, you know, solved that issue, I think, much more successfully with, with what we've done.
I want to go back to this, these landbank spaces.
Do you want me to expand the?
Yeah, right in here? Wow, these are great.
Oh, these are new?
Oh, yeah.
Sparkly things for the planning board to wall off, follow.
We had to sign these out.
Yeah.
That's right, but don't turn them on yourself, you'll burn a hole right here.
And don't go outside and point it up at some jet flying overhead.
Look at this.
Yes.
You're going to blow that up?
Blow that up, oh!
It's not part of the plan.
I don't know why.
Maybe enlarge it. Hit escape, hit, hit escape up top.
Whereas.
And then you should be able to go over to the 33.3 and blow it up over there.
Well, see that, where did I flip back? Apologies. I don't know how I got back to the.
You hit the down arrow, which took you to the next image.
Yeah, the down, those, those change pages.
Up at the top.
Sorry.
There.
Oh, I see.
That'll get you to the next image there.
Then go over to the percentages, or the plus minus to get bigger, smaller.
Just, yeah, scroll it down. There, that's good. That's better.
Okay.
So I had thought that, I remember this conversation about, one of the reasons to, to turn, to return this, the landbank spaces here. What are you doing?
I tried to do the full screen and it.
No, just, just, just stop there, no, just stop there, right, just leave it alone, that's fine. So, but I thought the reason to do that was that, and this gets back to our transitional zone question that, that we are going to be addressing, I think, soon, the planning board will be, which is, this is a, a big commercial building abutting a residential zone here. And so I thought that one of the reasons we were going to try and return this part of the parking area because they're land-banked and therefore, we had recognized that they're going to be temporary, could be temporary, but not just to put lawn there, because lawn, to me, is, you said there's a 20-foot buffer. Well, yeah, not really, though.
Yeah.
It's lawn, so it really doesn't act as a screen kind of buffer.
Yeah, okay.
It's like a carpet. So I thought that what we were going to do was to take a couple of these spaces and actually put shade trees in those.
Yeah. We, we showed that.
Had that conversation.
We did, right, and, and.
Did I miss this somehow?
No, I think, just through the process with Steve, we realized we could do the vet, we showed those deciduous trees in the landbank spaces when we were thinking we were still able to keep those other existing trees as a further enhancement, and we couldn't, we didn't want to crowd new things around the existing trees. When we realized that the exist, some of those existing trees had to come down anyhow, we refocused all the new planting in that 10-foot buffer. That being said, we don't have any objection to, you know, an additional tree, two, three, whatever you would like to see in that buffer, I think.
I mean, I, I think that you could.
Be more natural, don't you think?
Well, yeah, that was, that was our, I thought that was our intent and that came out of that discussion. So in, for example, this little triangular wedge here.
Yes.
That, if that word says lawn, is that actually also a landbank space or not?
Yes.
Okay. So, I mean, I, I wonder if that is a big enough planting area right there to put a, hey, what is that that you have designated there? What's Attila cordata, not Attilia cordata, what?
You know, we have the.
It's a little leaf linden.
Oh, yeah, good, better, you can see it from there.
Is it a dwarf, or does it grow?
On that schedule that shows.
I think it grows to about 25, 30 to 40 feet.
Okay, okay, so that's good.
Yeah.
And if you put that in the right, if you put that in the right place there, if you actually have to end up taking all those spaces back.
Yeah.
That one would be in a location where it would, it could remain.
It would still remain.
Right.
And I think, yeah, the.
So that's good.
Would you like to see another one?
Well, I, again, I, I thought that we could get two of these spaces that, I was fine actually with, I don't know, three of these remaining as asphalt.
Yeah.
My, my bigger concern was not the ground cover, but was taking an opportunity to get a, a wider tree mass in there.
Okay.
And I think it would be great if they could be shade trees, because.
Yeah, that's more residential of.
And they also spread better than these, than some of these trees that we typically use as evergreens. We use a screening material.
Right.
So, yeah, I think it would be, it would be up to you and Steve and, and, you know, landscape architect, your team, to figure out maybe which two of these, which two of these landbank spaces could be turned over to a planter.
Okay.
And it doesn't have to be 25 feet, what are these typically, 25-foot spaces?
No, 20, I think you.
No, parallel spaces and 20, is it?
23 minimum.
Yeah, okay.
22, 23.
You don't need all that, I mean, you need 10 for a planter for a, so these could be 10 by 10 planters in here.
Right.
And if you do it right, maybe you only lose one space.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So let's go back to that, and I'd like to see that again.
Sure, yeah.
Or I don't necessarily have to see it, I'll trust you to work with Steve Coleman.
Yeah, right.
As long as we know that it's going to get done this time.
Duly noted, yes.
Yeah, I think that's a, I think that's a great idea, and in fact, if you have the right kind of tree in there, then if you have a loss, you know, of a tree that you planted on the barrier, then you might then come back and ask the, the staff, could, well, could we take that tree out of the pot and put it over there?
Yeah.
Type of thing.
Yeah, and, and, exactly. When you decide how to do it.
Yeah.
Be cognizant of the conditions that are there now and place it strategically, so that you're getting maximum effect.
Right.
And maybe also place the trees, so if you do have to bring parking spaces back, you don't have a tree that's on two spaces, it's just like on one space.
Yeah, you're right, right.
And that way, you can minimize it.
Right.
And I'm thinking two trees.
Yeah, two more, right.
Right, just take one space and get two, two trees out of there.
I think we're convinced.
Is there under the expectation that if the parking is needed, the trees will be removed?
Right, this is all temporary, right.
They'll either be removed from the site.
Or relocated.
Or relocated to a safe place on the site.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
But that has to be the underlying understanding, because the landbank parking is critical to.
It's already in the, yeah, agreed, it's already in the draft.
And we also have three more spaces up here that are landbanked, too.
Correct.
So I would think, I mean, should we do that? Should we say in a matter of order if we need landbank spaces? It should be these, these three first? Have we done that before? We sort of prioritize landbanking?
Keep those trees as long as possible.
Exactly.
Yeah, that would certainly be the goal.
Sometimes, I mean, sometimes I think our parking regulations are inadequate, because, you know, things happen on sites, and these, some, these businesses are more popular than one would expect, but sometimes they're more than adequate. And it might be true that, you know, we don't need all these landbank spaces long-term.
Right.
So that, might as well take advantage of that, of that possibility now.
Right, 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 right.
Are those landbank spaces there, those three behind the building, are those numbered? Are those leased or what?
Yes, those are numbered, yeah, we've numbered.
35.
Good eyes.
Now, I'm reading the map.
Throw your bone there.
Okay, good.
That's great, yeah, we're certainly happy to.
Okay.
Do those things. You know, I just, so if there's no other tree questions, I just want to show you a couple of the pictures that.
There you go, pull it down.
Successfully got to project that picture before in terms of the signage. Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't remember if we managed to get that out or not. Color, texture, just so you saw that retail, you know, what the retail, commercial level texture is going to be like. Certain, and the windows that are actually on the face of the building, the awning windows above, and that's that arcade, but the signage would be out on the face of the canopy, and then.
Is that stone natural, natural field stone, or is that some sort of fosst treatment?
Natural, yes. I mean, these days, they make thin veneer, stone, just same price as the concrete stuff.
I, I remember our conversation being that that size pediment and that sign is really probably adequate only for a four-letter sign. I mean, essentially a generic sign.
Correct, right, right, right.
So where's the tenant signing?
On the building, on the glass.
Underneath.
Underneath, see the store.
That's what I thought you said last time.
Right, okay.
This one's going to go to the ARB, and there is a comment on.
Right, 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 okay.
Okay, that's good.
This is the building entrance sign to the right as you come in the parking lot. Again, field stone. We wouldn't put the field stone on vertically, we would probably do the field stone horizontally. Our renderer decided to do it another way, but the, the, the general intent.
Turn klykwas.
Yeah, I mean.
Don't laugh, I saw something like that end up in the field.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Somebody rotated the shop drawing and they.
They made it. I imagine that, oh, really?
I think it was very thoughtful of whoever made this. They gave us a horizontal one on the right and a vertical one on the left, we can pick.
Escher-esque, right, you, as you walk around.
So how would that sign, the way you've got that sign set.
Yes.
That's going to run, what, east-west?
Correct, perpendicular to, to 117.
Are we okay with that, Bob, in terms of sightline?
Certainly in terms of setback from the street, we have to.
Well, you have to check it, I mean, as long as it's back more than the 10 feet, 12 feet at the driveway entrance. Looks to be. It should usually come back about 10, 12 feet from the edge of pavement.
No, that's 23, right.
It looks to be about 20, 25.
Oh, it's 23, there should be no, no issue at all.
Okay.
Oh, and then we have the light fixtures, I think there's, that light to the right is the parking lot light fixture, shielded LED, and there's all the details about this, the control of the lights. And lastly, I just, again, couldn't remember if we got this image up. There was a question about the property at 137 Bedford Road, and their view or not view of the proposed building, and this is a view from that person's second-floor bedroom window looking south, obviously during, you know, during the fall when full leaf, but the, the dashed white line is the outline of the building, you know, to the south, and what you would see presumably when the, when the leaves come down. So just wanted, again, to make sure you saw that. That's all I have to go over.
Okay, great. Bob, do you want to run through your memo?
Uh, yes. With the stormwater comments, ST1, basically the environmental consultant had a report that should be put into the appendix of the stormwater report. ST2, ST3 have to do with the performance and maintenance bonds for the stormwater facilities. General comments, G1, basically, I'd just like to see the letter from the fire department accepting the fire truck turning movements right on the joints that are signed by the chairman. So we have that formalized and memorialized right on the plans. G2 and G3 really refer, we refer to all of the items that are required for the retaining walls, sections, general notes. G4, G5, G6, G7, G8 really have to do with technicalities with the water, water service line for fire service and domestic. Obviously, there's going to be a fire hydrant that's going to be relocated on private property, so there'll have to be a water maneasement agreement submitted to town council in recordable form. That was G8. G9, all the locations of all traffic control, parking, handicap signs should be shown on the plan along with the sign legend, so during construction, we know exactly where they have to go. G10, the Cottenville volume should be shown on the site plan. G11 has to do with the flows and the county planning recommendations, which we adhere to. Based on the flows, they're going to have to provide some ratio of three to one for mitigation, and that would be something that was put in the resolution, and that's done prior to a CO. In similar fashion, we did with Chapel Hill Crossing, where Jerry and I have to sit down with the applicant and see what type of mitigation they can do for the new increased flows into the town sewer system. G12 has to do with the county rule and regulation. Anytime you exceed a flow of more than 2,500 GPD, they treat that line as a sewer main, and it has to meet all the regulation requirements for that. And G13 is a easement agreement for the connection to this new drain inlet that has to be given to town council to make certain it's filed in the county. There's going to be G14, a sewer connection permit from Jerry Marshall. G15, they're going to need a sanitary sewer connection from the Department of Public Works. And G16 is an engineer's estimate, so we can figure out what the bonding is for the stormwater overall bonding and the inspection fee of 3%. All of these comments have been incorporated into the resolution as conditions prior to the plat signing, building permit, and door CO.
Right. Any problems with any of these? Okay. Okay, good, thanks. We have Steve's memo, do you want to run through it, Sabrina, or, I mean, it looks like basically he's agreed.
Yeah.
Worked with the applicant on this?
Correct, and Steve's memo goes through the findings with the, with the, the tree permit, the tree removal. He's gone through the site with the applicant based on their most recent submission and identifying trees to be removed. He, you know, you guys have already spoken about the recommendations regarding the little leaf linden, and he's asking that the landscape plan be updated with some of the notes that he has placed in his memo. Other than that, he said that the requirements of chapter 137 and 121 have been satisfied by the submissions, and he, and conditions have been incorporated into the resolution, which address his comments.
Right, great, okay.
And then I had prepared for your board a. Sure.
About the which? Your microphone isn't on.
Is it on now? Is it on now? So I was asking about sound attenuation and what the town code says about sound at the property line, and I asked Jennifer to refresh my memory, we discussed it at the last meeting, but I wanted to hear the regulation again.
Can you refresh my recollection of the zoning districts? That were in.
It's BR.
BR. Okay, so noise produced within any residential or non-residential zoning district shall not exceed 60 dBa during the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., or 45 during the hours of 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m.
So that's at the property line?
Yes, it's typically measured at the property line.
So, so that means any applicant would have to comply with both of those regulations, the daytime and the nighttime.
Yeah.
So I had a question again about 115 Bedford Road, where you talk about the sound attenuation going down to 33 decibels at 120 feet, but I didn't know whether that was the distance from the HVAC to the property line or the HVAC to the home itself, which would be.
Can you speak into the microphone, please? Thank you.
That was to the home. The property line is about 18 feet from the home, so it's about 100 feet from the source to the prop, to that property line.
Okay, so again, it's just demonstrating it at the property line, though, as opposed to demonstrating it at the home.
Correct.
That, that it would not exceed the 45 decibels.
And if I could just, so I read further in the statute, and there's another section that specifically relates to air conditioning and air handling equipment, so if that's the source of the noise that you're concerned about, it says no person shall, or no owner or occupant of any premises shall operate or permit to be operated, or use or cause to be operated, an air conditioning or air handling device that produces a sound level greater than 55 dBa on any other property used for residential purposes within a residential zoning district. So to the extent that this is considered a residential zoning district, that would be the, the standard that applies.
That's, that's interesting language. It says used for. I mean, so. I mean, so in a residential zone, there are, there are other than residential uses.
Sure.
And so the use could flip, right? I mean, over time, the use could flip from one use to another. So it just occurs to me that if it's, if it's actually intended to protect, I think, the residential aspect of the zone, I mean, the other thing about it which is curious to me is that we have residential zones that have side yard setbacks and rear yard setbacks which are different depending on the zone. Some are greater and some are less, right? And so if that's the case, and if the intent of the, of the code is to actually protect the home, right, it seems to me that the, that the standard ought to go to the setback line, not to the property line. Because in one abutting zone, the house is 10 feet away from the property line. In another abutting zone, it's like 30, 40 feet away from the property line. So if the, if the purpose of the code is to protect the homeowner and the homeowner's home, it's really not doing so in a consistent way because it only recognizes the property line and not the distance of the home from the property line. And we're not gonna sit here and change the town code right now, nor will we ever. But it's interesting, I mean this gets, sort of gets back to this transitional zone stuff again.
Yep.
Decibel levels wanna really change with the setback.
Yeah, decibel level, yeah, the distance needs a lot.
It's a mathematical equation.
Yeah.
But you're right, we're not changing this.
So when you did the calculations, what was the number you got at the wall of the house?
32. 33 decibels.
33 decibels. Okay, all right, so, and that's the closest proposed air conditioner at this time, all right, so.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Oh yeah, sorry, Bill.
I thought I was just gonna ask a short question.
Yeah, you don't hear me on the tape then.
Right.
I could show you in the plan for 115 Bedford, that noise source is shielded by a wall of the building, so it would depend on the noise bending around the building to even get to that, that property. So that gets into the physics of sound, which in some sense does bend, but it creates a different.
So we don't have any air conditioners on the north side?
Correct, exactly.
All on east or west side?
Yeah, there is one on that balcony, you know, second and third floor balconies around behind the turret.
Is that the closest AC unit?
Correct, exactly.
Right back over there?
Exactly.
Behind this.
Exactly.
Behind the turret?
Turret.
Turret, thank you.
Beautiful element. Yes, so, so we, you know.
But in typical territs, the windows are much narrower, is that right?
Oh, yes. We could do that.
Well, let's not get started.
So I wanted to follow up on that with a question maybe to Jennifer because there's a provision in the draft resolution and just because we're talking about sound, I thought it'd be good to talk about it right now, it's on page 17, if it hasn't been changed in the latest draft. But on page 17, item 37, it talks about the aggregate effect of the AC units or, I don't know if that's AC or HVAC or all those things combined, but the aggregate sound level produced by all of them and then it talks about them being a maximum of 60 dBA at the property line, but that really should be 45.
55, wasn't it?
55. 55.
Yes.
Oh, probably. Good catch.
But we've never really talked about the aggregate noise level from 14 and then the businesses, I presume, will have other kinds of air conditioning units in them than HVAC?
On the other side of the building, correct.
On the other side of the building, but then we have to be concerned about the noise on the other side of the building.
And it's commercial.
It's commercial over there, but.
But still it'd be our zone though.
But I think it's the same, it's, we don't have a differentiation in the sound attenuation between a business zone and a residential zone in the code at this point.
And maybe just to make, to be sure, we know what we're talking about, these are residential air conditioning units, small ones. Each of the homes that you're talking about have, you know, the regular scale commercial air, residential air conditioning units. So, you know, as opposed to where you might be concerned about commercial, you know, air conditioning equipment, rooftop mounted, you know, this is certainly not that kind of thing, so.
So I think that you raised, and I don't know enough about acoustics to sort of answer the question, I think, one of the questions you posed, which is what about the aggregate?
Yeah, it's not a, I've read a particular part about it, it's not that you're adding 58 plus 58 plus 58 plus 58, it's the.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, it's a very, actually small and.
So are these through the wall units essentially, or are they freestanding?
These are interior, you know, air handlers with an exterior condenser unit, this is really the condenser unit.
So the condenser is sitting on the balcony?
Right.
All right, so the, I'm guessing that the condenser is rated, that's how you, the four, its sound qualities?
Correct.
Qualities, and so that's how you.
That's the 58, the 58 decibels is it?
But is it true or not true that it really depends on the environment that it's in? If it's actually on a balcony and on three sides, there's a building right there. Does that increase, because, does that increase the noise that actually comes out? Because it's not dissipating all the way around the unit itself?
I think it decreases the noise, the turret decreases the noise.
I'm sorry?
I believe the turret decreases the noise as the noise bends around it and once it takes a longer route, then there's more dissipation. So it's a little, it's still all geometry in one equation, but.
Well, you said the turret?
Yeah, the building wall.
You guys are talking about two different things.
Yeah, I'm talking about the balcony.
You're, you're, as if it was reflecting, your concern is that the building reflects the noise?
Out.
Out, right, is that what you're trying to say?
I'm talking about on the side of the building where the units are.
Bill, why don't you put that photo, that rendering up again so that we can be looking at it?
I mean, I know that in, in certain, certain towns, certain codes, you actually, they're supposed to have a sound baffle in front of air conditioning units.
Right.
And I just, I believe that the sound that goes towards the wall doesn't dissipate, doesn't disappear, it bounces back.
To the degree you have sound reflective materials, now I would propose that we are putting on, you know, exterior materials that are actually somewhat sound absorptive. So I would be surprised that the reflectives, it's like the siding, right, the siding materials are, you know.
It's hard, it's painted, I mean it's.
Yeah, but it's still, I, I mean, my opinion would be, it's still, it's not increasing the noise level by, to reflecting it is, you know, wouldn't be, it wouldn't be any greater if that's what you're concerned about.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, and I don't know the answer, but it's just interesting to me because.
Yeah.
But you raise a good point in that, that I don't think we have an adequate sense yet, given the reg. I mean, I think the, this whole paragraph in the resolution, Jennifer, number 37, we have to, we have to consider what Sheila said, that, well gee, there's a, there's a 60 and there's also a 45 or 55 at night. And we talk about reflective and we talk about, you know, that if the thing is located right there, then maybe there's sound bouncing, but it's also bouncing in other directions. But you're gonna have one here and then you're gonna have one here, right? Cause this is all one apartment here, is this all one apartment?
No, no, those are two on each floor, so four total.
So it'll be four total, so I think.
The two far ones are at the other end of the balcony.
Yeah, so there's two here, two here. So I think that, you know, Tom raised an interesting point as to, you know, can there be baffling around it? I mean, you don't want to choke off the airflow or whatever, but you wanna, if you have baffling, that's meant to attenuate it and I thought I remember seeing something like that.
All right, should I have it on this flash drive? There was a wood lattice.
Your board previously discussed that.
Wood lattice enclosure that we're gonna put over the units, partially, you know, mostly for the screening of them from the street, but.
But it's open because it.
It's open to let the air.
Ventilation, so it's.
And then it's behind the railing of the balcony as well, so.
It's an open railing though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and it's actually, on the side of the building where it's closer to a proper, abutting property owner rather than in front of the building.
What you're saying, sorry, I'll go back to the rendering.
On the, what's the right, proper orientation, the south side of the building.
South is down here. Well, I had a question on that, the property that is directly to the south of this property, is that still within the BR zone?
Yes.
So now the issue is, you know, that land here could also be developed in the same exact manner with residences and, you know, you're very close here, where are you putting the commercial air conditioners?
On the ground, in, along the building.
On the south side?
Yeah, and again, condenser units, right, not, not.
Not a whole unit.
But you're gonna have, instead of all this space over here where we're decreasing the sound going to this border, here we have what, six feet, eight feet?
10 feet.
10 feet. You know, I think we have a different problem here because wherever you put these on the ground, there's nothing there right now that might be impacted, but we could see the exact same sort of development here to your neighboring property to the south. It seems to me we need to be concerned with the same exact sound requirements. I don't think, my guess is you might not meet the, the code with these units that you're gonna put right up against this, the property here.
Yeah.
So we need to know, I guess, what, what the commercial air conditioning units are rated at and what that, what that sound might be on the line.
Okay, let me, let's, where's south, is this south or is this south?
No, to the right.
So right is south.
Yes.
But this is all commercial here.
Well, it's the same zone.
Same zone, BR.
You could have the same exact thing.
It's a residential zone.
You could have a residential building there.
So the big ones are here.
Yep.
Big, oh.
Well, commercial.
You're saying the condenser units, commercial condenser units, I mean.
Okay, they're bigger, bigger, they're bigger condenser, condenser units, right?
I would, I would suggest they're gonna be probably about the same size as the residential units because they would still use that same system, the, you know, sort of Mitsubishi type, you know, ceiling mounted mini-split unit and you see those same kinds of condenser units used for commercial buildings as well.
And 4,000 square feet's not a lot of commercial space.
Right.
So the units aren't gonna be, you know, a big season four on top of the supermarket.
1,500, 1,500 and a thousand.
It's gonna be more than a, than a single condenser.
It'll be more than a residential, I agree with you. I don't want everybody to think they're gonna be these big masses.
But we're also talking about the aggregate again, I don't know if that's right or wrong, but that's what we have in our resolution here. And it seems to me if you have three units that are rated at 58, right there together, when they're running and only 10 feet from the border of the line,
That's a bigger problem.
I don't think it's gonna meet the requirement, I suspect it won't, I shouldn't say, I don't, I don't know if I thought.
It won't meet the night, nighttime, it might meet the daytime.
It might meet, yeah, correct, correct. But even so, it won't be, it may not be sufficient to meet our code. I think one of the things that we have to think about here in this transition, this transition area in this BR zone is it could be residential again right next door. We can't just look at it what it is right now, we have to plan accordingly. So I guess the question is, can we put the commercial ones up on top, do you have any space on the roof?
Yeah, we could do it on the roof too.
Exactly.
Well, then how are they, how are they shielded, you know, architecturally?
The roof in between, I don't know if I have a plan that could show that, the roof in between, we have sort of surrounding peaks and in between the surrounding peaks is a, not totally flat, it's still pitched roof, but we could certainly put.
Do the peaks go all the way around?
Yes, yeah.
So that we'd have to see a visual of what that's gonna look like.
Yeah, I think that, I think what we're coming to is that.
Do you want me to, here.
Oh, take it, yep, please, yep.
These peaks here and then behind there runs, you know, north-south on both sides of the building and then this is a sort of lower peak, east-west at both ends, there is a very slightly pitched roof that runs from that peak to its mate at the other end of the building and certainly equipment could be put.
So there's a valley there.
But how much of a depression do you have in there to, to shield?
Three or four feet, yeah.
At least units going three or four feet, aren't they?
Yeah, are you concerned visually? Sheila, is it a visual concern or you're saying?
Well, it's visual and sound, but there's two, moving it up there.
The visual is probably minor, because the people can't see.
Up that far.
And if you don't mind me saying, just as context, the area is surrounded by one-story commercial buildings with rooftop commercial air handling equipment. So I'm proposing that we are using equipment that's much quieter than any of that surrounding, those surrounding uses, so.
Yes, but they're grandfathered.
Understood, but.
That's today.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if somebody comes in, you come in with a client and want to do the same thing next door, you know, that's all part of the development of the town in a direction I think the town would like to see.
Yeah.
And so I wouldn't, I wouldn't use the standard of what's there today to suggest that that's what we ought to be accepting in the future.
Yeah, but just to the degree that there are no, you know, I know that there's a car wash facility just south which has, which has generated complaints about the, its mechanical equipment, so I'm familiar with that. It's incredibly noisy, it is.
I understand, but I think it's a moot point.
It's 150 feet away, but it.
It really matters not.
What I would suggest is you look seriously at baffling, because I think a lot can be done with baffling, it's not that expensive.
Correct.
And, you know, real baffling that cuts the, you know, the 58 in each case, you know, down to, you know, 40 or something, 10 feet away and then I think you're gonna be okay. But you gotta aggregate, you know, the, you know, these right here, you got two floors, so you got four units here and you have to aggregate that after you've baffled them and then you've gotta consider your three units over here on the far end and, you know, see what you can do about baffling those and if it's too much of an issue, then. You might end up putting them up on the roof or something.
Yeah.
Now that's gonna send noise all directions, but, you know, you can baffle them up there too.
Yeah, sure.
So think about that, I'm not asking, I don't think we're asking for, you know, a lot of extra, you know, equipment or anything like that, it's just what can baffle this noise down?
Yeah, and then those are many, plenty of options for the kinds of things that are manufactured to do exactly that.
Okay, so if you could come back with that and some better, more enhanced calculations now that we've complicated the physics of the problem.
Well, we still might be able to, we may still be able to condition it by saying that on all sides, we have to meet the code, we're just cognizant that we're in a BR zone. It's up to the applicant along staff to make sure that we are meeting those aggregate numbers at the property line.
And that condition actually already is in the resolution, that condition number 37 states that the applicant shall submit to the building inspector a sound analysis showing the calculations for noise attenuation attributed to the increased distance from the building's noise source, i.e. the air conditioning unit. So it, it requires that a noise analysis will have to be submitted to the building inspector to confirm that as proposed, it meets the requirements of the noise.
But just the way it's worded, it's a maximum of 60 dBA.
Well, we can, that should be changed to 55.
A maximum 55 and I don't know how the 45 number plays.
Well, honestly, it's not applicable, it's 55, there is no nighttime or daytime for.
I think because it's air conditioning.
Because it's air conditioning equipment, there's a specific standard that's 55 across the board at all times of day and night.
Great, good.
So this is one of these, I'm still concerned about the aggregate and maybe the aggregate of many of these units on the same face of the building doesn't actually deliver a greater decibel level at the property line than one would.
I, just to say, I think I've read that it's maybe one or two decibels increase for each additional source of noise of the same decibel level.
So we wanna see that in the calculation as well.
Yeah, the, the condition specifically states to consider the aggregate.
Okay, so, but here's the other, here's where, what I was getting to and this is not necessarily, at this point, pertaining to your project in particular, but a general observation, I think, for the board, which is that engineering doesn't always answer all the environmental questions, right? And there's a number here, which is a number, which is an engineering number, right? But I think that there is a, there is an environmental impact, a difference in, in an environmental impact just from the sort of nature of the community of having a wall with one unit in it delivering 55 dBA at the property line and a wall with 10 units in it delivering 55 in the aggregate to the property line. You walk by the building and you have 10 of these units going at the same time as opposed to just one. So the numbers are the same, but the environmental impact of the community, I think, is dramatically different.
How so? I am confused.
Well, because you're walking past a wall of air conditioners rather than just one. So if, if, if there's.
But if there's, if they're baffled?
Wait, let me finish, you don't understand, if they're baffled and maybe, and of course, if one's baffled, anyway, if they're baffled, you know, that's better. But I'm talking about, in this case, I'm just talking about a general observation that maybe the code doesn't really address what the total environmental impact would be.
Okay.
And I think we're asking that these be baffled and I think that will help.
Definitely.
Right.
Baffled or on the ceiling, on the roof, whatever works.
Or on the roof, right.
And if they're up there too, they have to be baffled.
Yep. But I think it's gonna be an easier task.
Yeah.
Baffling's probably less expensive than moving them up onto the roof and doing all the piping.
Whatever.
Well, they'd be baffled, they maybe, maybe need more baffling down, if they stay on the ground level, the commercial ones.
Right.
Because they're so close.
But I, I think what Tom's, uh, comment is, is it's an aggregate. As you walk along that sidewalk, you're gonna hear that, you're gonna hear that, the same fifty-five the whole time as opposed to hearing fifty-five once. So I think that's the issue.
Dare I suggest that there's a state highway right next to you as you walk by the building? So that possibly the, the noise from the air conditioners might be.
The state highway is not active at ten o'clock at night.
Yeah, daytime, it's ameliorated.
So, let's just.
Whatever that means.
Yeah, okay. Well, it's, it sounds like we're kind of treating this as, you know, that's your prerogative, treat it as some isolated thing. The, the noise context of that road is significant, so.
We want to be cautious that we don't end up with deafening noise along our roadways in our, in our downtowns and our, whether they're commercial or mixed or residential.
Again, these are.
You don't wanna make it louder and louder and louder.
So, one of the objectives of, I think, the comprehensive plan is to make our, our, our hamlets, our downtowns walkable and enjoyable to pedestrians. And, so I think that that's an issue here. And yes, at, at certain times of day, there's a lot, I'm sorry, certain times of day, there's a lot of traffic.
Yeah.
Uh, but at, um, we have the, um, the code says that you can run these units from, what was it, eight o'clock at night until eight in the morning or whatever it is? And there's not that much traffic on that, on the road in that particular case.
Yeah.
And times, midday times, there's not that much as well. So I, I, I hesitate to say, well, because this, this project is on this road, we're gonna forgive all of our principles.
Yeah, well, no.
I don't see us as.
We have to meet the code.
No, I understand that.
Totally agree with that.
I understand that. And, and what I'm, what I'm questioning is whether the code is adequate in ways in which we can work together to mitigate ways in which the code, um, or the project could be improved beyond the code. And baffling, I think, is a, is a terrific idea. If it doesn't work, put, I would recommend you put them on the roof, which is where I think they should be anyway.
Yeah.
The ones, the commercial ones.
Right, right, right. Okay.
One, one last point on that was when we looked at the planting plan, I don't see where you have any space for these units on the, on the ground.
On the ground.
Because the trees are covering that whole side, so something has to give.
They're planted.
I think there's, those are shrubs.
Those are our screening of the air conditioning unit is the shrubs.
Camouflage, yes.
Yes, well, I certainly think we, we would definitely fence slash screen those units at the grade level, and then the landscaping would be beyond that to be able to visually screen that, so we'll make that clear.
Good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions, board members, before we open to the public?
Just had a question of curiosity. I know, um, this is not in our realm of purview, but I was just curious, when I was looking on the plans for the residential, for the second and third floors, and I noticed that the elevators are seven by seven feet. I know you've already vetted it through the ambulance, the CVAC. But I was just curious, can a gurney fit in a seven by seven foot elevator?
I wouldn't go by that. I don't know where the seven by seven came from. Did you, is that written on there?
I thought I saw it on the plan.
It has to be gurney accessible, so that might not be the right numbers for the gurney size elevator. We're actually just now getting into that, those particular guts of it, so.
And then just another question of curiosity with regard to the bedroom count. I noticed that some of the floor plans have dens with closets, but not with windows.
Correct.
And I wondered if that was the differential between a den and a bedroom, if you didn't have a window in it, even if you have a closet in it, it is not counted as a bedroom.
Correct, yeah.
Was that by our code or?
Yes. Even if it, if it is an area that has a door and doesn't have a closet, they may count it as a bedroom as long as it has a window.
If it does have, even without a closet.
Correct.
The windows and the.
Yeah, it's the window. I was just, I was just curious.
Yeah, no, that's.
The windows, the key.
Okay. Anyone else? Any other questions? If not, are there any questions or comments from the public on this application?
Please.
Sure.
Come forward.
It comes out, too, if you wanna make it, just slide it out. Twist it a little and it'll come out.
Feel like a singer here, right?
We were hoping.
Is your name and your address?
I'm sorry, Marion Campolongo, one thirty-seven Bedford Road. So, our bedroom is on the front, on the road, and it gets pretty quiet at night. I mean, occasionally, you know, you do, you hear a truck and you're like, oh my gosh, 'cause, so, you know, you might wanna call it a state, but it's, trust me, if it was a state highway, I wouldn't be living there. I mean, in the sense that, you know, they're saying, and I mean, you know, there are times of day certainly when, you know, rush hour, when it does get louder. I guess just in talking about the aggregate of the noise, um, just really an observation, I mean, I'm not, you know, an engineer and I have no idea, but I know that like when my gardener comes and I'm in my house working, it's loud. And then suddenly, my neighbor's gardener is out there and it just becomes like, oh my gosh, it's really loud. So, even though, you know, you're talking about, you know, sort of the second one actually being further away, there is, you know, the, the, the noise piling on top of the noise, even though it's probably, they're both probably at the same decibel level, it, it does feel louder. Um, my only other question, I guess, that I had, when you were talking about like these, um, the balconies and they're, you know, like up there, um, I, you know, I came in late, I had another appointment before this, but, um, you know, Bill was talking about the wall, and I'm assuming we're talking about the wall like near one fifteen Bedford Road, which is our next-door neighbor, um, that that wall is, you know, sort of stopping some of the sound coming. What I'm thinking about, okay, if these things are up on the balconies and there's noise coming out, like what's that gonna, that's gonna be coming, like across, that wall's not gonna stop the noise that's coming up to, you know, my office, which is right on that side of the house, or my bedroom that's, you know, right along the front. So I, I just, you know, you know, I don't know that like measuring it behind this wall down here is gonna be the same measurement that you're gonna get, you know, straight up across where that's just, you know, a tree. That's all.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Um, just an observation or a question first. Can you go to, back to the plan for a second?
Sorry, I didn't have a building plan.
It's all right, no, that's, that's fine.
Yeah.
So, um, you're one house down from this lot, you're over here.
Right, we're one house further.
So, the distance that your, your house is from this wall right here.
There, it's gonna be a lot lower, obviously.
It's very far. And.
Good, good.
Sound really dissipates really rather quickly the farther away you get. I'm not gonna say you can't hear it because I don't know that to be true, but I think that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be too concerned about it myself, but you can ask them to, to tell you, to do a number of what would be the decibel rating at, what is it?
Well, I mean, I, you know, I was just concerned about like the wall, you know, like if they're doing it behind a wall, is that just gonna be different than, you know?
They could, they could give you a number from the, from where these units are to your house, the decibel level there, and you can compare that to other things in your life, and I think you discover it's really probably diminished.
If, if I may, the applicant needs to submit a, a noise analysis. They can't take the measurement from behind the wall unless they're taking it out in front of the wall, around the corner, to the parking lot, to the property lines, to this property line, to the other side of the house. I mean, they have to show a viable demonstration of the noise from the noise makers, if you will. And so that's something that we, it, it's in the resolution to be required so we can understand the actuality, and, and it is an engineering study. It may not be reality, but it's the best that we can get to get a better sense that we're not violating any of the town's codes.
Understood, but that gets you only so far as the property line.
Correct.
And this homeowner is concerned about her property.
And, and I think that they would, they could agree to go further if needed.
Well, they did. They went further, they went to her building wall.
No, they didn't.
No, not hers. She's on the other side of the neighbor's wall that they went to.
Another hundred and fifty feet down the road.
Oh, another hundred and fifty feet. Oh, okay.
I mean, I don't know, I just, I mean, I don't know how loud this is gonna be.
Well, it's, do you have any, any window air conditioners?
Um, I have.
Can you make sure you speak into the microphone?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sure. No, but I mean, the point I was trying to make, and you made it much more eloquently than I did, was that, you know, measuring it behind a wall is not gonna tell you what it's gonna be like, you know, between my neighbor's, you know, quarter acre, which is longer this way than this way, and, you know, my yard or something where, you know, it could be out. That was all, that was all I was curious about.
I'm curious, do you have window air conditioners or have you ever used them?
Um, yeah, we do, we, we do have one.
Okay. And is that a, a noise that's terrible?
Um, it's not great. I mean, I don't, you know, but it's, but it's rare. So, but that's gonna cha, you know, yeah.
So this is like, oh, it's right here in my window versus.
And this is further away, right. But, but I don't have like a big condenser, I have a little, you know, unit for my, you know, ten by twelve room.
Trust me, those little units can be a lot louder than some of this equipment.
Well, the newer, let me tell you, the newer ones are way better.
Window shakers or.
They are, yeah. They say that, don't they? Yes.
Anyway, we hear you.
No, but I mean, that's, you know, the thing is too, I might find that I want my windows open, you know, at night, and then I don't need my air conditioner running all the time because we don't have central air. We, we don't really, we use the air conditioners when it's really, really hot, that's what we're used to. We're not having this sort of condenser thing that's just going on all day long.
And I think we're, and I think we're saying that we're gonna, we're gonna be looking at that.
Yeah, no, I, I'm, I'm not.
Okay.
I, I think you guys are, you know, going in the right direction here, and I just, it was really just more of an observation and.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We have a comparison of what fifty-five sounds like on another piece of equipment? Like, what's a leaf blower?
Oh, my.
You have seen that before, we've asked other applicants to do comparisons. We've got numbers on them. The applicant, as part of their noise analysis, will submit to you typical decibel ratings of equipment that you typically hear out in the environment.
We did, and, and our submissions indicate.
I can't remember seeing it, you had a whole chart.
One property, uh, which is the property behind, three hundred feet to that house, the fifty-eighth became twenty decibels, which is whispering.
And there, there were applications that you had for generators in the hamlets that you asked for that information to be submitted, so we have it on file as well and they can resubmit it.
As I recall.
Good thing for us to have here at the table, so we could say, oh, look.
So where is it in your packets? You, you don't hang on to this stuff?
Not everything.
I believe you did receive it. Looking for the cards.
When we looked at, uh, a recent application, it seems to me that we heard that the ambient sound just of being here was about sixty.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so fifty-five may not be that big of a deal.
No, I don't think it is.
That's what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah, and now that was in, in the, I think that was in Millwood.
But then who wants to be here?
Wants to be here or wants, who wants to be heard?
Moving on.
Nothing else to learn.
Is there anyone else who has, uh, wants to speak? Okay, if not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
So moved, second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have an EIF, uh, that's been revised from the last one, that's before us.
Okay.
Any issues, questions on it?
Well, maybe.
Uh-oh. Got the school on there now.
What do they do with it?
I had a few questions on the narrative, are we going over that now or something else first?
Yeah, this, we're going over that.
Yes, yes, yes.
I'd like to go over that if I know what to do with it.
I don't remember, Jen, it's whatever you reviewed.
Okay.
I don't know, I didn't make any changes to it. I didn't have any questions on the, um, on the form, I had, okay. Take a look.
Okay.
Okay, let's see.
So if, if everyone's looking at the version that we had in front of us last month, I understand there's.
It's been revised.
Okay. It's been revised since last month?
Yeah, there were a couple of changes, like the school was changed, for example, Dick caught that last night.
I have not received that, so.
Did we change it?
Same with the decibel.
I don't know if we changed it.
Well, you did, and a version was sent to my house, so.
Okay, then it was changed.
Yeah, it was changed. Cause I, I looked for it and it was changed.
There's a new one with two changes in it, like on page four, about asking for the fire department's letter.
Yes.
That's the resolution, we're looking at.
Human resolution.
That's one, we're looking at the, yeah.
So on page one, we just need to add the date of tonight's meeting in the third paragraph.
Are we talking about the resolution or the EIF?
I'm looking at the EIF, the attachment to the EIF to part three.
Well, did you wanna talk, you had some issues on the EIF itself?
Uh, but Dick had some issues on the.
Page nine.
On page nine of the.
And one place else. I, I'm curious, uh, under section sixteen, impact on human health.
Yes.
Um, we checked, you know, we said, well, gee, there is, is, there is a nursing home within fifteen hundred feet.
School.
And, um, you know, so we had to check yes, and so you changed that from no to yes. But then, I don't understand what led you, you know, what led us to the point where we say it's a moderate to large impact which may occur as opposed to just a small impact.
It's supposed to be a small impact.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because if it's large...
That check is in the wrong box.
Thank you, I, it's like, it's in the mail, right?
Yes.
I see, all right, and I had a...
Good catch.
Had another one, um, where is it? Is it humans also? Those humans are pesky. Uh, here we go. Okay, so I don't have another one, I, I think we solved the, my other one, which was impact on noise levels, by saying, you know, it's not going to be an issue.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, going to the text that was attached, Jennifer, you said we had to put the date in.
Yeah, I have a couple other changes too.
But we had some other changes?
Yeah.
Sheila, did you have some questions?
Questions, yes.
Yep.
On page two, under impact on plants and animals, uh, the proposed action will not require the removal of any onsite trees regulated by the town of Newcastle. Now that, um, some of those buffer trees are coming down, and one of them, I think, is a thirty-six inch tree, I know it's in poor condition, but would it still be a regulated tree, and does that change?
If it's in poor condition...
It can, it can come down.
I think it's still regulated.
It's regulated, but...
But it's approved.
Yeah.
It was approved for removal, but I would consider it regulated.
Right.
Because it's a specimen tree.
Right.
Um, because of the fact that the applicant has submitted a tree removal permit, I, I would say that, um, there are regulated trees that are being removed, so that, that needs to be updated.
Yeah.
This will need to be updated.
So the nod comes out.
This will need to be updated, this section based on the tree permit that was submitted in Steve Coleman's memo.
So we can say the proposed action will require the removal of X, whatever the number is, um, amount of, um, onsite trees regulated by the town of Newcastle.
And then do we say something like, you know, the planting plan will mitigate for the loss of those trees, or?
Yes, it says on the second bullet, it says that the landscape plan is proposed to screen the new building from the surrounding residential properties and to enhance the street, streetscape.
And we can add, and will meet the requirements of mitigation in accordance with the town code.
Then on page four, the first paragraph, second to the last line, uh, where, um, uh, we're talking about the entrance terminus with Bedford Road to improve overall circulation and maximize safety, I would suggest removing maximize, and just, we're just improving circulation and safety.
Can you repeat that, Sheila, I'm sorry?
First paragraph on page four, the second and third lines from the bottom of that, where we're talking about the entrance terminus with Bedford Road to improve overall circulation and maximize safety, I would suggest removing maximize and just say, we're improving overall circulation and safety.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, um...
Also, the first parking space, um, has to be changed, because we now have those others land banked, right? In that first paragraph.
Say that again?
On page four, um, uh, in that first paragraph, uh, do we not have to make that change because we are, um, eliminating the first parking space, but now we've changed it to those land banked, um, parking spaces? Is that different from the elimination?
Yes, this is, this is different.
Okay.
This is different, this was initially, there was parking all the way up to the...
All the way up to the edge.
Correct.
Right, got it.
And then on page five, um, uh, going back to screening and noise reduction for the AC units, I didn't know if those, uh, those lattice, um, decorative lattices were really considered screening or noise reduction elements, but now we're talking about something possibly altogether different if...
And that's a specific condition in your resolution, for the consideration of baffling and other implements to reduce the noise, we can add similar language here, um, if you feel that noise reduction surrounds is not sufficient enough.
Well, uh, my point was simply, I'm not sure that we had shown any at this point, but it is reflected in the, in the, in the narrative. But, you know, based on the discussion now, we may be looking something for, something different, we may, we may add that, we may have them up on the roof, depending on what the noise analysis shows.
Right.
And so I think noise reduction surrounds, um, surrounds is an odd word, but it works for me. It will be provided.
Okay.
You know, and so have to have a noise, but I, I have another question, oh, I'm sorry.
Or should we say that there will be a, a noise analysis that will demonstrate that there will not be a significant adverse environmentally packed on noise? So we don't have that information quite yet.
Yeah, it's conditioned in, in the resolution, but, yeah, we could put it here, I guess.
Right, it's part of the project that, that they will be submitting, uh, a noise analysis to the building inspector to confirm compliance with the noise ordinance.
Everything has been complied with in the resolution.
Right.
Okay.
Because that's a condition in the resolution.
But we can add that, that a, a noise analysis...
Only if you think it's necessary.
Will be submitted.
I just had that question.
Yep.
I have a question back on page six of ten.
No, I was done.
Um, can I, can I just do one more thing on the EAF, on the document we were just reviewing? On page three, under impact to aesthetic resources, the second to last bullet needs to be removed, because that talks about the funding for screening on adjacent properties. So that's no longer applicable.
We're not doing the offsite, exactly.
Yep.
Dick, you're on page six of the...
Yeah, six of the F.
Which one does it remove, Jen?
Impact on aesthetic resources, and, um, I just want to make sure that we're okay by saying no on everything. As I read the A, B, C, D, et cetera, that it, uh, it, this is not an issue, aesthetic resources in this particular case. However, when I read C alone, it's the only one that I, that I get, um, uh, you know, an issue with, and I don't understand, you know, whether it's, it's okay the way it is, because you have to take all of these questions and the intro in context, in, in composition.
So...
The issue is, the proposed action may be visible from publicly accessible vantage points. Well, if you drive by in a car, it's going to be visible, and it's, and it's not, it's not an event, but we're okay by saying no for everything, right?
So, we are okay for saying no for everything, because if you read the forms accordingly, you would reference section E three H in the part one, which asks about significant landmarks and other visual, or other elements of visual importance, and if, you know, the information contained in that form furnishes whether or not there's any impact here. So referencing does occur between what the applicant submitted, what we know is true, and the form, and the part two.
Yeah, I couldn't find it, so thank you.
Okay.
Jen, could you please go back and, and which was the bullet that you wanted removed on page three?
The one that says, second to last in your aesthetic, to further.
Page three.
Thank you.
So with those amendments, is there a motion to adopt the, um, the statement here? We have what, um, the assessment form and the statement?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So this needs to be changed before I can sign it? There are a couple of changes on here, I think.
Yep.
Sorry.
Good try, though.
Who seconded that? Who seconded that motion?
I did.
Thank you.
Okay, we now have the resolution in front of us, um, for this project. Um, you know, perhaps before we, uh, take that on, I just want to thank the applicant and staff. You know, our regulations on transition zones are not that clear, but I thought we did a very, very good job in, in anticipating what those might be, and I want to thank the applicant for working with us, because, um, this, this might be a model of the way, um, you know, applicants and the town really works together. And I think we identified, you know, I sit around that bulletin, uh, for Sabrina, really, to draft the memo for the town board, but I just tried to identify the, the kinds of issues that we seem to be, um, facing, and I thought that the applicant really faced these head-on with us and dealt with them very, um, seriously and, and very cooperatively, and I, I, I thought it really worked out much better. So, thanks for that, and I, I think it's, it's going to be tough working in these transition zones, but I think this is a, a good model of the way it couldn't work out. Anyway, thank you. And we go to the resolution, so, um, does anyone have questions, issues, as we go through it? Yep?
Now, I'm on page four, anybody in front of me?
Uh, I, I have something in front of you, but it actually refers to page fours also. Uh, so on page one, um, the old draft, not the draft that we had on the table tonight, page one, lines thirty-eight and thirty-nine, uh, we refer to fifty-four parking spaces, and on page four, uh, on line twelve, we, we refer to fifty-six parking spaces. So I thi... I don't know, just have to bring them...
Yeah, consistent.
Make them consistent.
Whatever the number is, do you remember, Bill?
Total parking spaces? I believe fifty-six.
That's with the banking, without the banking.
We could have like a lottery on this, you know?
Page once is fifty-nine.
Yes.
Page one is fifty-nine, page, page four is fifty-six.
Page four is fifty-four.
What line on page, on page four?
Uh, page twelve, requires fifty-four parking spaces, the plan proposes fifty-six, three of which, oh, and there's an S missing from spaces on line thirteen.
The off, it, it says, the, the clause says the off-street park requirements of the code require fifty-four parking spaces, and the plan proposes fifty-six parking spaces, three of which will be handicap spaces. So they're providing more than the town code requires, which is where the fifty-four spaces comes in, it talks about fifty-six spaces, and if we go to the page, the first page, where we say...
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine, that should most likely be changed to fifty-six.
And is that fifty-six plus eight for the banking, or is that fifty-six?
No, it's fifty-six includes the eight, and they handicapped.
Should we clarify that here, just so people understand that?
There's a, I think there are resolution, um, you know, whereas clauses that talk about the land banking later on.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
Line twelve is okay on page four, we just have to add the S?
Yes.
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 Well, on that page, where we do talk about land banking, do we put Steve Coleman's, um, information about what the soils, or is that...
That's a condition, it's just a condition on, in the resolution, later on.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone on page two? Three?
I have a, I have a global question.
A global?
I've noticed that in here we say deputy town engineer, and we say town engineer.
It should be town engineer.
There's only one deputy in here.
So is it, deputy goes away, and it's only town now?
Yes.
Okay.
There was one mention where there was deputy in here.
And that's how long this resolution has been around.
Page fourteen.
I got deputy twice on page thirteen.
Do a search, do a search for deputies. So I did have something else on page four, if we haven't passed that by already.
No, we haven't, but I'm, I'm line five, were you?
No, no, I'm after you.
Ah, there we go. Line five, we say that we're gonna, this project is going to bring vitality to the downtown area, but none to the uptown area?
What line are you, what, oh, you're on the new one?
Well, okay.
Yeah, line five, page four.
This is...
Page four. I'm on a new one.
Yeah.
Yes, it's the new one. Oh, boy.
Where was that in the old one?
That's, uh, page four, line ten.
Ah, okay, got it. Now we're...
Space between here.
But I, I have two choices that I would suggest. One is you change downtown to uptown, uh, that's less typing, but you could say uptown and downtown areas.
You could just say the hamlet.
Uptown is not a word that we use, it is lower, upper, it's lower, mid, and upper King Street.
Okay, fine.
That's all part of the hamlet?
And it is all part of the Chappaqua hamlet.
Why would you just call it a hamlet?
Hamlet area.
It is the hamlet, it's not a hamlet area.
And have the applicant have to change the project to really demonstrate some...
To the Chappaqua hamlet.
Okay, I'm ready for...
We are changing downtown area to Chappaqua hamlet.
Yep.
Okay.
Sheila, you had something else on page four?
Yes, it's, uh, uh, on the new draft, which I'm now looking at, lines twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, so it's the clause about the fire suppression in the attic. And when we had talked about this at the last meeting, we talked about there being a sort of a whereas and a therefore clause, but it, there is no corresponding therefore clause, and I just wanted to make sure that, unless it's in this new draft, but I just wanted to make sure that that was okay, that this...
We got it, yeah.
We can have it in both the whereas and in the conditions, we can have it just in the whereas, it's up to you.
And I didn't...
My recollection was that it was just going to be in the whereas, so if it didn't make it to the conditions, then, um, then, then that's...
Does it, does it need to, does it, is it, you know, is it something on the site plan? Is it something on the, the plan that gets signed? Is it, is it a condition of a building permit?
My understanding is it's, it's indicated on the plans, is that, it's, it's indicated on the plans currently, so by approving the plans...
So it's already on the plan?
It's already shown on there.
Okay.
Should, should we say that, as shown on the plan dated whatever?
Sure. That ties it in. Okay? Anyone on page five? Six? Seven?
Are we missing a document in there?
Eight?
Let's take an hour and check them all out, see.
It's okay, I checked them.
Thank you, Tom.
Nine?
You're welcome.
It's what he does. Ten?
So I had a, a question about, about, um, conditions to be satisfied, and I think you already answered it, Jennifer, but I just want to check. So, so we now have three drafts of this, and in each one of the drafts, there are different conditions to be satisfied, or at least, I had a draft going back to a couple of meetings ago, and there were a completely different set of conditions that needed to be satisfied in that previous draft than the ones that showed up in the...
Because they satisfied them.
I just wanted to check, I just wanted to check that they've been satisfied and they haven't been...
We're watchdog in it, don't worry.
Okay, good. So if there's a new set of conditions to be satisfied here, you've watchdog that as well.
Exactly, the final resolution that you approve is the final set of conditions that we look for.
Okay.
So, no changes on ten? Eleven?
I have a, a question on J, section J.
The maximum retain height?
Yeah, um, we have a lot of good things here, we have seven good things, you know, that we want to do as a minimum, but I was wondering, you know, I would think a railing would be, you know, co-equal with the seven that are, that are already there, huh?
They show a railing on the site plan.
I know, but it, should it be a condition?
No.
No? Okay.
It's on there.
It showed on the site plan.
Fair enough.
Okay.
So if that's...
If they didn't show it, I would...
Perfect.
Put it in there.
Okay, so twelve, I only could, um, I had a comment on twelve, it actually goes to the lighting detail plan. In each of these, um... Do we have the numbers yet of the number of poles and lights? Um, because whatever we have in a plan, it seems to me that we ought to condition it, and it should be not to exceed the number set forth on these plans.
There's no number on the plan, that's why we need it on the plan.
They are marked on the plan.
They're marked on the plan, so should we say not to exceed those, the number that's marked on the plan?
We have.
My concern, again, it's a transition zone, we don't want to see more lights creeping in later on without some sort of review.
I had a suggestion for, um, and this relates to the, the discussion you had earlier about the land bank parking spaces and adding trees. I thought a good space to add that would be under M, at the very top of page twelve on the new resolution. It talks about the submittal of a revised landscaping, landscaping and tree replacement plan that, and we can add numeral one, changes the size of the little leaf linden, uh, to four-inch caliper, and two, locates two deciduous shade trees in the land bank parking spaces to the satisfaction of the town environmental coordinator, and the planning board recognizes that the trees may need to be removed or relocated in the event it's necessary to activate the use of the affected parking spaces.
Okay.
Works for me.
Good. Anyone on thirteen?
Yes.
Okay.
Section I, it says, prior to the commencement of any site work, the applicant shall stake the location of the proposed residence and the proposed septic area. Do, can we change that to the proposed building and the proposed recharge areas?
Makes more sense.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Can you repeat that, Dick?
H thirteen.
Yeah, page thirteen, section, subsection I, the second line, it says, proposed residence and the proposed septic area, and I would suggest we use proposed building and the proposed recharge areas, I think there's more than one, right? Or is it just one?
It's one area.
One area, okay, so singular for each area, could change those two words? And that, um, down in section K, the last line, I don't think there's any royalty in the, in Westchester, so maybe we should add a Y to... You know, why there isn't any, I don't know, did the word...
What was that?
Uh, the last...
Was sister count.
Count.
I didn't know there was one, but county? Right, good Y. What's up, Alex, you, you having fun? Come on.
Okay, page fourteen, other than the deputy town engineer. Uh, my thoughts are, down on S would be, it says as close to twenty-five hundred Kelvin as possible, but should we put in something that says, and not to exceed three thousand, twenty-seven hundred, whatever it might be? Um, that's a little bit too loose for me, just saying around twenty-five hundred.
Well, if it, if it says as possible...
As practicable.
Or practicable, well practicable gives more leeway than possible.
Yes.
So if it's possible, and...
That's why we'd like to put in not to exceed.
Not to exceed what?
Three thousand?
Twenty-seven hundred.
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven hundred.
Twenty-seven's fine by me. Okay?
Then do you want to say as close to twenty-seven and not twenty-five?
No.
No.
It's close to twenty-five, not to exceed twenty-seven hundred.
I think, I think that's good. Except...
Anyone on fifteen?
No.
I just want to read this new, I haven't seen this text before.
That new language just incorporates, um, something that was missing from Steve's memo.
Okay.
Where do we talk about, we talked about that prioritization of the land banked spaces?
That was earlier with the trees, I think?
Well, where, we have to put that in, where are we going to talk about the prioritization?
Yeah, I thought later on, um, there's a condition, number, where is it? There's a condition that requires the submission of a land bank parking agreement.
Is it twenty-five?
Yep.
Yep.
Yep, it is.
Um, yeah, twenty-five, um, I thought that that might be a logical place to add the prioritization that in the memorialized land bank parking agreement, put the prioritization of those three parking spaces in there.
Yep, and we all agree with the, with Steve Coleman's recommendation that we use a ten-year monitoring maintenance plan?
Yes, I do.
Good.
Yep, I'm, I'll, yep, I can have to...[1736.13]
Anyone else on sixteen? Seventeen, we talked about 37. And again, and number forty, I would again, um, say not to exceed 2,700K.
On forty, right?
Uh, forty, did I say, what did I say? Yeah, forty, I'm sorry.
Number thirty-seven, um, an IE question. Uh, are we talking just about the commercial air conditioning units here, or also the HVAC units as part of the aggregate noise analysis? And therefore, should it, should it be air conditioning units and HVAC units, or EG?
Well, it's, it's an interesting question.
Does the code include both, Jennifer?
Yeah, I, I think there is.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Question was-
I thought a little bit about that, too, and I think it's good particularly for this precedent-setting approach that we have, that we have the right amount of flexibility and aggregation. So, one suggestion, Jennifer, might be the applicant shall submit to the building inspector, et cetera, et cetera. Increase in distance on line two from any noise source from the building, and then in parentheses, EG, air conditioning units. And, for instance, demonstrating that the proposed aggregate noise from the building is multiple air conditioning and air handling units, or mechanical units. Air conditioning and mechanical units would be in compliance with the maximum 55 dB A level as measured at the property lines pursuant to, et cetera. If you wish, I'll give you the page.
Okay.
Any comments on that?
No, fine.
Was there a different requirement for sound producing versus air conditioning? Wasn't air, did we hear before that air conditioning has a different-
Yep, it's air conditioning and air handling equipment is subject to a 55 DBH maximum at the property line.
All noise producing, so that's not just, that's just not air conditioning, that could be anything making a noise. So are we mixing up air conditioning and other things?
No, I mean-
It's outside the code, isn't it?
The air conditioning units are subject to their own DBH maximum.
So do we need two things, is my question?
We may, and it may be simpler to just say that noise from the site must meet the code, period.
Just reference chapter ninety, that's it.
Yeah.
Let Richie figure it out.
We don't need to.
Well, that-
Reference the code.
Yep, code speaks for itself.
Except the, the requirement is that the applicant has to submit to the building inspector the sound analysis, demonstrating that-
That they meet the code.
That they meet the code.
Simple, I love it.
Could be a new game show, meet the code.
Now, are, are we putting anything in here about the, what was it called, the baffling? Or the relocation of units to the roof? How, how did we leave that discussion? I just want to make sure that we're including anything in the resolution.
Isn't that a condition that would be necessary if the noise analysis shows that they'd need to make those changes? And they have to use either baffles or put it on the roof or accommodation?
We call, we call for a noise something surround.
Is it possible, may I make the suggestion that the requirement to submit the noise analysis and any accommodation to reduce such noise if necessary? As part of the sound analysis to the building inspector? I mean, because if, if they're submitting a sound analysis, the intent is to make sure they're in compliance with the code. And if that means that their devices have baffles on them, because that's how they get them to comply with the code, then we'll see that they have baffles on them.
I, I think we leave the, um, compliance to the applicant.
Yeah.
However they need to do it.
Right, if they're putting them up on the roof to get them out of the-
Make any other changes where you cut down more trees, to put more baffles in, or something like this.
Yeah.
I think so, I mean, you know.
And I might recommend just memorializing that in the resolution.
Yes.
That, um, you know, the applicant, that the planning board understands that the applicant may need to add baffling or relocate units to the roof in order to comply with the code. And that basically, you're okay with that.
Right, or something else.
Just so that it's not unclear in the future, as to whether or not they need to come back to you, or that's a change in the site plan. It just makes it a little bit more clear for processing. Up front, or only if they show that the current methods will not meet the code, right? Right. Yep. Sure.
So that, they would do either or?
Or whatever else may be-
Well, that's what Tom is saying, that maybe not, or anything else.
If there's something else that they propose to do to meet that requirement, we don't know what that is, maybe we'd like to know, we'd like to know that.
Well, the question is whether or not you wanted to come back to this board, or you would trust that the, the building inspector through the sound analysis will approve of those devices.
I'm okay with-
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I'm okay with it, yeah. That's fine.
Okay.
Okay. Just let the code stand and let the code do its job.
Yeah, don't try and change.
Not, not now.
Wait, wait until next month, new year.
Next year.
New year.
Good, okay.
Good.
Good.
With those changes, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Well, thank you.
What are you going to do with your Tuesday nights now?
You can come back anytime.
Come back and report progress.
We have a, we have a clack, what's it called, a clack?
Okay, we move now to our next item of the evening, and that is the concept study for Lamoney. This is a concept study for legalization of an unauthorized steep slopes and wetlands disturbance, um, situation at 402 Sorrel Street. Is there a, was there a tree issue here, too?
Yeah.
So it's more than, it's, um, steep slopes, wetlands, and trees?
Yeah.
Yes, I believe they cut down some trees.
Okay, all right.
So, can I-
That's a, that's a third permit, then.
Can I, um, just-
Well, actually-
Make an observation about-
Let me ask Bob another question. Will this also involve a steep, um, um-
Stormwater.
Stormwater.
Absolutely.
So there's four applications. Okay, just want to make sure.
So, um, before we get started here, uh, I note that Steve Coleman isn't here this evening. And, um, I mean, he's, he's written us a memo, and there are, we have memos from, um, other town staff, which are informative and helpful. And I think that we also have some correspondence from the applicant, um, to, to explain, uh, the situation. And I'm just, to me, it seems like this is a fairly significant, uh, matter here, because of the num, the amount of acreage that is involved here. And it's in a wetland that has a wetland buffer, that also has other water bodies in it. And I just, I, I feel a little bit uncomfortable going too far in this discussion without the benefit of having Steve here. I, I can't imagine us or myself coming to really any informed conclusion about the discussion we are, may have tonight, without Steve's input. So I would like to suggest that maybe we table this until we have Steve here, so that we can get a full discussion of what the issue is. I think it's a really important issue, and I, I think that, for me, I mean, we've got town engineer, and we have, uh, planning staff. But without Steve, I just feel like it's an incomplete discussion for us.
That probably is the case, but I think, again, this is just a concept study, so it's not even an application at this point, so it's just fleshing out, I guess, the problem. Uh, and I think Bob has been, um, involved with this, uh, this issue for a while, and I think he worked with Steve on this. I, I think we can go forward, at least get some basic information, then we understand what we have to do in terms of even applications.
And my understanding, too, is I think one of the, the main goals is to see if there's any receptivity of this board, to schedule a joint site walk with the ERB, um, for some time in January to, you know-
That's fine, we could do that without, without, we could just do that, and say yes.
If nothing else, I think maybe we can at least coordinate that.
Okay.
So, hearing all this, um, so for the record-
Wait, uh, I'm sorry, just, just a second here.
Sure.
I understand the chair's desire to hear this, so I'd like to hear from the rest of the board, to see whether this is something we want to take on without Steve.
I, I think that, um, everybody is here to give us at least a fundamental briefing, so that we can at least catch up halfway to what's been going on. I think the site visit will help us further, and once we have those, have, tonight, if we go forward with, with it, and the site visit, I think we'll have Steve back, and we'll have a much more erudite discussion.
Would, would it be possible to hear about what has been done? Would it be possible to hear about what's been done to the site without necessarily talking about proposed mitigations?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, just, just to get an overview of what has happened today, because I, I kind of, Tom, I don't, I don't really want to hear about proposed mitigation, so I understand what's gone on.
So, the, the history, and where we are today.
The history.
Yeah, what was approved in the past, and what wasn't.
And what happened.
Right.
And I think that will help catch us up with ERB, so when we have our walk, at least we're up to speed a little bit.
Fair enough, okay.
Sounds great, so I will streamline our planning presentation, I'm going to try to turn it over to Seth as quickly as possible, so he can explain what it has happened in the field. So just for the record, Brad Schwartz from Zerrin Steimets, good to see everybody, we represent Lamoney LLC, the owner of the site, it's about a 15-acre site. So to remind you, board, and rewind the clock a few years, we were here in 2013, and we sought a lot merger approval from your board to consolidate the five approved subdivision lots into one large, single-family residential lot, measuring the 15 acres that comprises this site. Your board granted that approval, we filed a lot merger map, so the lots have been officially consolidated, the property now consists of one lot. So that was in 2013. Fast forward to March of 2016, and after the ERB had reviewed and issued its approval, the town issued a wetland permit. That was to allow the driveway to be constructed within the wetland buffer. The town also issued approvals to approve and build the pool and poolhouse, which is located outside of the wetland buffer. And the pool and poolhouse was also presented to your board and the ERB. As a result of the ERB approval, there was a, um, pretty extensive wetland mitigation plan. Most of it has been implemented, there's a, a meadow that's planned to be installed this spring. But I guess I could probably stop my presentation there, turn it over to Seth, let him explain the prior mitigation plan that was approved by the ERB, what has been done, what's remaining, right, from the prior approval? And then talk about what had been done in the field, that, but we're obviously disappointed to be here tonight, having to report to you, that work was done in the field, outside and above what was covered by the prior permit. It's in, it's in the materials that the town has issued a violation, so I'm working with the town prosecutor, we're adjourning the justice court proceedings, while we're appearing before your board and the ERB to process an amended approval. And I, I just want to emphasize right up front, that we are not seeking approval simply for what was done already in the field. We, we recognize, and Seth will discuss, well, we're not going to get into the proposed mitigation tonight, but ultimately you'll hear about the restorative efforts that we are proposing as part of our mitigation plan. So I just wanted to emphasize that, we're not just seeking approval of what was done, but we are hopeful and optimistic that we can work and achieve a reasonable plan with both your board and the ERB.
Hello, my name's Seth Tyserst, I'm landscape architect, working on the project. As Brad mentioned, in 2016, we were granted a wetland permit from the environmental review board to install the driveway, which you see on the bottom corner. Yep. Yep, right there. Um, as part of the mitigation that we were required to do to install that driveway, we installed 49 trees, 64 shrubs, 2,200 perennials. And we're also required to install a meadow, which is scheduled to be installed in the spring. Where, where-
Could you locate that?
Sure, sure, so, that green right there is the meadow. All those blue trees were part of the mitigation. And that little area right there is also, uh, the trees, perennials, and shrubs, that were part of that, uh, required mitigation.
Now, to help this, that, where is the, where's the wetland line, and the buffer line?
So, um, the wetland line just goes right along that channel, right there. It's a very thin wetland. The buffer, it's kind of hard to see, but it kind of goes, yeah, right there, you can see that blue line.
Yeah, it misses, it misses the pool.
Exactly.
So all this, all this here is in-
Right.
Pac-Man up there.
I'm going to get one, too.
Wait a minute. What's the red line represent?
These are fun.
You have to take these away.
What's the red line represent?
The red line is the limit of disturbance. So that, that was the required limit of disturbance when we developed the area.
North of that.
Everything north of that is above.
Is above and beyond.
But now, isn't this, isn't this area in the overlay zone, and the, it's 150 buffer?
That's right.
Isn't there a wetland down here, like a New York State but, wetland?
Can I interject something here? I went on the New York State resource mapper, and I'm not the wetlands guy, and I'm opposed to be a wetlands guy, but I just wanted to bring everyone's attention. It shows to me that there's a New York State DEC freshwater wetlands right on the other side of the street.
Yes, exactly. So it's not just this buffer we're talking about.
I would recommend that the planning board maybe have the applicant do flagging along there to see-
Right.
If there's any wetlands there.
We have a, I mean, to my understanding, we have a DEC, uh, mapped wetland right across the street, and within 150 feet of, of this activity.
And that would be included in this, because you can't segment it.
I have to say that-
Microphone, please.
Yep, yep. And introduce yourself again for the 217, 2017 season.
Barry Naderman, Naderman, playing engineering, I'm the engineer for the project that has been for the applicant for the prior projects on the property. Something that, that should be noted here is that, yes, we acknowledge that there's a, a substantial wetland buffer on the other side of Sorrel Street. Okay, it doesn't go right up necessarily, but there is a large wetland system here, which is, which is going to be an important factor in our, in our mitigation, obviously.
Was it flagged previously, Barry?
I'm sorry?
Was it ever flagged and surveyed, located?
It was not, I don't, I don't believe it was, but I, I do want to point out that, that this, this, what we're, the subject of our being here tonight is well beyond 150 feet of the state wetlands, well beyond 150 feet.
Yeah, but wouldn't you, Barry, wouldn't you include the work that you were planning to do, and include it in with what you're doing now, and don't segment it? At least I treat this as one application, now, because really you just did that after the fact, that's my opinion.
This work in here, this was, this, this hasn't changed. This is all work that was, was part of the original approvals for, for all of this. We're just representing here that this is, is stuff that was under the prior mitigation, that, that's yet to be done, and still, still committed to be done. That was scheduled to be done in the spring, to do the meadow and some of these, oh, well, actually, a lot of this was done already, wasn't it, Seth?
Yeah, that, that's right, all the trees, all the trees, shrubs, and perennials have been installed, the meadow is the only remaining item.
And that's this, that's this olive green right in here. But the, the subject of the violation is, is from here up, and well beyond.
But you're going to segment the project like that? I mean, I'm just saying, as if, this just came in for one project from the get-go, that all would have been in the-
But it's my understanding that the work down, those blue dots, and the olive, and the, the other color green there, and the blue, that, that's work that was previously reviewed and approved?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Right.
Right, so that's, that's already been reviewed.
They don't have their CO, though.
Right, but it was-
They're not done yet.
Yeah, they're still in the middle of it, they're not done.
Right.
Are you going to segment it? Okay, I just wanted to bring it out.
Anyway, I'll let, I'll let Seth, let's have to continue, but again, we're sort of getting into what the proposed mitigation is. I thi, I think the board wanted to hear what work has been done, right?
No, I think we also wanted to hear, uh, I think we should also understand the parameters of the property, and what's adjacent to it, and the conditions out there. So this is not mitigation, this is just establishing the conditions, and I think it's important, and I think Bob agrees, that it's important for the board to understand, we'll see it out there when we go there, that we're talking about a DEC watershed, a DEP watershed area, we are talking about a New York State DEC wet, uh, mapped wetland, which it means has to be, what, more than 13.6 acres? Or 12.6, whatever the minimum is? So it's a substantial system, and to Bob's point, you know, you talk about steep slopes contiguous to, uh, wetlands and buffers, it, it should be looked at as an entire system. So we're just trying, this is not mitigation, this is not fixing it or anything else, this is just establishing the parameters, so we all understand what the conditions are out there. So I think Bob's point is, is a very fair one, uh, to understand that.
Don't disagree at all.
Yep.
So, um-
And, and to that point, at some point, Bob's point, which I, and I think we'll probably hear from Steve, we'll see, and to Tom's point, we don't have Steve, so it's, it's unfortunate. But that kind of, those conditions should be mapped out there when we're out there in January, so we understand where these, these wetlands and buffer lines are.
What's the, uh, New York State buffer, 100?
100.
100.
100 feet. Our town, it says in the environmental overlay, is 150.
Right. Okay, sorry.
No, that's okay. So, so this property has a 150-foot setback, because it's in the overlay zone. So, when we were notified of the appearance ticket, um, our office went out to the site, and we did an inventory of the work that was done above that limit of disturbance. Trees and other plant material were removed, and then also new trees, shrubs, perennials, and lawn was installed throughout that entire hillside area. More specifically, 75 trees, 635 shrubs, and 9,296 perennials.
Were planted?
Were installed.
Okay.
By the contractor, that's right. Also, you can see the, sort of the brown path that goes up to the top of the property there, um, that was also installed, it's a mulch path. And that's about as far as I guess I can go, without getting into the proposed. So, so, yeah, I mean, uh, the trees were removed throughout the property, we talked to the contractor, he said that the trees that were removed suffered from storm damage. Um, the idea was to take down the damaged trees, and to allow more sunlight into the canopy, so that the, um, good trees would have- so that the good trees would have a better opportunity to grow.
But we have a memo from Steve Coleman, although he can't be here, and one of the attachments to his memo is, it must be an aerial map of the property before the trees were removed and an aerial map after the trees were removed, and that doesn't look just like storm damage, that looks like a substantial thinning of the property completely. So is there any way to quantify how many trees were taken down and what their condition was?
I don't know. That, that's a good question. We talked to Steve Coleman about that, we talked to Bob about that. I don't know how you would quantify what has already been done.
I mean, it was a wooded area, now it's a meadow area with, with some trees still left.
Right, right.
I would like to know what storm was the one that caused the damage?
Yeah, what was that storm event?
I want to characterize that. Microphone, please.
I don't want, I don't want to suggest that there was one storm that, you know, that had ran a swath through there. That's not the case at all.
Okay.
But we, we do know that this, this area is consistent with, we had done some work on this area in relocating some utilities up to the adjoining property owner here, and, you know, it was a, it was a moderately wooded, it is wooded, it's, there was very little understory in that area, and, and we have photos that, well, you'll see when you're out there, I have photos and things, but, you know, the, the understory here was sparse and, and as was the case up in here. So, yes, there were trees that were removed. There were a lot of downed trees that were removed, there were a lot of damaged trees that were removed, and it does, it, it, it seems that there were a lot of trees that were left, and those trees that were left were the important ones to allow to, to flourish. We do acknowledge that, you know, this is a violation, and, and we were all informed at the same time, we went out there, and from my standpoint, I was asked to go out there and say, okay, where are we now? What's, is there an imminent threat right there now to, to what's going on out there? And we had the benefit of a, of a very significant rain on October 29th, and this is part of my report. And within 24 hours after that rain event, I went out there and, and looked at everything. And there was absolutely, in, in any of these, any of these areas in here, there was absolutely no erosion as a result of that heavy rain whatsoever. We did see that within 24 hours, this drainage conveyance was, was absolutely dry. It wasn't even raining, it wasn't even flowing a day after the rain. There were some, some issues down by the road, there were some issues in this part of the channel that was not improved. Part of what was done is, is this channel up in here was, was stone-lined and stabilized. There was absolutely no, no erosion as a result of that rain event up in here. There was a little bit of erosion along the, the, the edge of the mulch path. The other side had a grass rail that was installed, but that was perfectly intact. So when we're in the field, we can show you exactly what happened, but there, there is not today an imminent threat to the slope stabilization of any of these areas and of any of the downstream drainage facilities, but we are going to be doing very thorough. I've already started mapping. There's a pond at this end over here, something that was important to note, it's not as if this property drains onto an adjoining residence. Everything in this area drains in two culverts across Sorrel Street to that wetland system that goes all the way to the north. The next, the next feature of concern is that pond, and what is contributing to the pond and what, as a result of this, has changed the characteristics that are run off to that pond, and we, we will be showing along the way. I started mapping out exactly how big that contributing watershed is, and there's, there's over 600 acres that, that do contribute to that pond. And we'll get, it goes all the way past Shutter Road to the, to the west and, and all the way south to the intersection of High Street and Sorrels and North Castle, but that's going to be a part of, of the overall analysis of, of what's going on out there.
There's an issue here, though, that, that you haven't mentioned, and that's this area here.
Yes.
There was continuous impacts in this area, because in this area, this is the area which you need to go out and look at, this is the area that was accessed by the workers. In fact, repeatedly, the stone wall was taken down, and they accessed the hillside from there, and in fact, there's been all kinds of issues in terms of erosion onto the road itself, upsetting the drainage of the road itself. I think DPW was out there just recently with crews to try to reestablish the drainage out there. So, and this area is absolutely within 150 feet of D E P and D E C wetlands. So this is another area that needs to be investigated, reviewed, mapped, et cetera, because it has been impacted.
I agree, I agree. That is, yeah, and there's a covert that's further down. Quite frankly, part of one of the issues here is that the drainage along Sorrel Street, this, this whole area is supposed to drain to the covert on the, on the north end, and that over time, and way, way beyond the time that this occurred, does not maintain that flow down to the covert that it's supposed to be happening. So as a result, it tends to back up in this area here and, and sometimes run over and across Sorrel Street directly. So, yes, we're, we're aware of that, and that'll be a part of our, our analysis.
And I think the chairman mentioned this, but can you flag where the, the buffer ends with the state wetlands, so we, we see if that wanders onto the property?
Yes.
Or not?
So. Acknowledging that we are talking, we are going to have to get permission from the adjoining landowner to access the property to flag their wetlands, I believe. Actually, that was a part of that subdivision that.
There's a.
What's his name did, so that might have been mapped.
It's open space over there, also it's town open space, it's parkland directly across the street.
I don't know offhand, but I know there was an old subdivision years ago, I forgot the name of it, and there was.
Yeah, we reserved the parkland directly across the street. So you got the town parkland also to deal with.
But, but that, one of, my suggestion is during that process, that D E C wetlands would have been mapped on that property.
Right.
And we can, we can try to look at those maps and see exactly what was.
Yeah, but I'm interested more than the wetland across the street is the buffer.
No, no, I understand, but, but we have to know where that line is on that adjoining property in order to.
You don't have to flag the wetland for me, anyway, but do the buffer.
The.
Well, the buffer is because we have, I guess, what, town regulation as well.
To get the state to get the buffer.
Right.
At least once you get the wetlands, you survey locate it, and then you draw on the map, 150.
Well, I'm suggesting that, yeah, if the map exists, then a survey map makes it.
So it's, it's, it's good that you had out there to make sure that there are no, I won't say catastrophic, catastrophic events, but damaging, like.
15 years ago.
Events of erosion. But I'm guessing, because we've lost the forest floor, which is one of the best environments for rainwater to percolate, it doesn't mean you're not getting a lot of runoff that you didn't have before, and running off, you said that, I thought, maybe I misunderstood, I thought you said that there were some concerns about excess water collecting down here, which would be an indication that you are getting, that one is getting more runoff off the site as a consequence of what's been done.
Yes, but one also has to discuss that what, what that additional, does that additional runoff cause a problem at this location? At this location? Because once you get across the street, one major function of a state wetlands is.
I understand we have to be sure we're identifying that.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
But another thing, too, is, like you said, that used to be forested and woodlands, now it's just grass, and I'm guaranteeing.
Yeah.
When you get the, when you get the curve number and work it over seven acres, that increase in runoff is going to be huge.
No.
Certain.
And the water quality has to be addressed as well.
We, we, yes, we will be doing that. Absolutely, we'll be doing that.
Potentially some sort of retention device.
That's correct.
That's what I was thinking. If we allow this to stand, if one allows this to stand the way it is, when you talk about restoration.
We are.
I would think that would be one of the things that we'd be looking to.
Yes, and when we were.
Is not having to put, not having to engineer structures to solve this problem, potentially, but finding a way to, to restore the environment so it just, the water stays on site and percolates.
It's, it's a combination of both, and we did see some perfect locations with Steve Coleman in the field where we can provide more, more retention in the uplands up in here and up in here and certain spaces in here.
Yeah.
Not Steve Coleman, D E C.
No, no, understood, yeah, yeah.
Right. So one more concern, which I think is that Bob brought up, I guess you have, you're familiar with this area.
Yes.
Is that if, if, if what he describes is actually happening here, that maybe there should be some immediate mitigation protection happening in here to be sure that it doesn't further erode and, and do more of what it's doing.
Did you speak to Jerry at all about this?
I did not, but I will.
Okay.
We see he might have some concerns with the roadway, possible roadway improvements with those two culverts.
Yep.
What we have in here, what we do note in here is on the downhill side of this, this section of this path, there were some logs that were placed, and there's some fencing nets that's along here as well, and that actually acted as helping to capture the sediment. You can see the sediment that's piled up alongside the logs and, and captured in the fence, which, which was a help.
Right.
It's not the be all, end all, it's not the ultimate solution.
As Bob says, that, that the town can go out and look at this and be sure that it's stabilized.
Sure.
And you have photographs of that pileup of the silt and everything?
Yes, mhm.
I didn't think you wanted to see all those now.
No, no. So I guess the thing, do we have any dates where ERB had proposed, any dates for a sidewalk? Do we know? Okay, so we'll just.
Wait, we'll email.
Yeah, okay.
I think it's important.
And obviously, we should look for, hopefully, you know, a snow-free walk.
Yeah.
First of all, the site's kind of sloped.
And the flags will be very important, too. The buffer flags, and maybe submit some detailed maps as to where those lines are.
How long do you think that might take you, Barry, to get that?
Well, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll, straight away, look and, look and see if I can find the record maps of that subdivision across the street and determine exactly where those wetland lines were. We then assign 100-feet D E C buffer and 150-foot town buffer, and that we can plot on our maps.
And I think.
Probably a couple of weeks I can.
And you've seen, you know, Bob has got a memo also.
Oh, yeah.
With some concerns, compliance with all kinds of stormwater issues.
Absolutely.
Good. Okay. All right, any other questions, comments? So I guess we'll meet at some point, hopefully sometime in January, when you're set, when the weather permits, and when it, when we can maximize attendance between the two boards. Okay. Very good, thanks.
Same to you. Thank you for the pictures and the discussion.
We have a request for an extension from Hakim. This is a site plan for an accessory apartment and a tree removal permit at 40 Campfire I don't think we had any issues or problems with that request. Did I understand it?
I don't, I don't.
Jennifer, you okay with it? Janice, it's within the, the rules and the guidelines, the boundaries? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the extension as submitted by the applicant?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Red.
Great, thanks again.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
So we received a memo, the next one is also a request for an extension. This is on the Sunshine Children's Hospital Rehabilitation Center, Spring Valley Road, LLC, M S A F Group. Application for wetlands permits, deep slope permit, tree removal permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan, 15 Spring Valley. So this is out of, there's an extension, I guess, for our referral back to the zoning board as well.
No, this isn't for us.
We have a plan to the town engineer within 60 days, which is tonight, so they couldn't do that because they waited for the zoning board, so they are asking for a 60-day extension to 60 days from when the zoning board.
Right, we're within the 45 days.
Okay.
For the, the referral.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not, we're not there yet, yeah.
We're okay. Okay, good. So is there a motion to grant that extension?
Can we do it without putting an actual date on it and just say 60 days from the 60 days?
From the date.
Right, so you can just.
From the filing of their resolution, as opposed to the data report.
Whichever is easier for you to track. The, the point is, is just what's easiest to track.
It's from the date of filing of the resolution of the Z E D A.
Okay. If that's, is that okay?
Yeah.
As long as we have a way of tracking it, right?
Yep, yep.
Okay. As amended, is there a motion to approve the?
Motion.
Extension?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have two sets of minutes, April 20, 2017. This was our conversation about the draft town comprehensive plan. Do you have any changes on this, or do we want to just tackle some of these changes, I don't know, individually? Are there any, should we go through this then?
I'd have some.
I had some.
I had some too, but, you know.
If you want to, speaking of red line and different people.
Oh, that might be, that might be easier.
I think it would be, it'd be easier, and it's, you know, it's a conversation that is kind of moot at this point, anyway. Okay, so we'll do that on this one. Yes. Good.
And then we will provide you back with truck change.
Very good.
And then we have, excuse me, December 5 minutes.
I have one question on the last one. The, the septic sit, no, I'm sorry, the.
What page are you on?
On page 5 of 8. Just a clarification, I want to make sure it's right. The, that way I won't have to send anything. Now, the young, you're talking about package treatment plants, and there's an I E that is Random Farms in Fox Hollow, and Fox Hollow includes Riverwoods and the, and the Yeshiva.
Fox Hollow is the plant that Riverwoods and Yeshiva discharged to.
Okay, fair enough. Then I have no comments to submit. That's excellent.
So we have the December 5 minutes?
I have nothing.
Nothing.
I don't have anything. Does anyone have anything?
I have nothing.
I have one, let's see what it is. Yeah, let me see if it makes sense. Okay, on line 59, page 3 or 4. I don't understand the last phrase, you know, which says, "And pushing the line's boundaries can be a problem." The lines, so it would be, is it an apostrophe after the S on lines?
Maybe it's just a redundancy.
Maybe it's one word or the other.
Or is it too, is it redundant?
Take out lines.
Take out lines?
Yeah, just take out lines.
Good.
Okay, as amended, is there a motion to approve the December 5 minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Before we close, we have, it's that time of year, and.
Well, we have one more thing.
We have one more thing, and that is.
What's a big thing?
A very important thing. Ah!
Oh, my goodness.
We have a very important thing, a very big thing.